Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting in committee of the whole for the purposes of a budget workshop. It is Thursday, September 28th, 2023. The time is 1:35 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Krueger.
Here.
Councilmember Danson.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. All members are present in the quorum. Item number three is approval of our agenda. We are going to begin our series of budget deliberations by the council with a budget overview, and then we go into a briefing about all of the various budget ordinances and resolutions in order to construct our 2024-2025 budget. And then we're going to go through the budget schedule in greater detail. And then we'll certainly take many questions, thoughts, and comments along the way, but we'll reserve some time at the very end for Councilmember discussion and questions about anything we've heard today and thoughts going forward. Is there any objection to approving the agenda that we have planned for today? I'm not seeing any. The agenda will stand approved. That does bring us to item four, and that is a budget overview of the executive's proposed budget. I just wanted to, before I turn this over to Mr. Bokey, to make some further opening remarks, I want to thank all members for certainly making themselves available today, but over the next many weeks, we're going to be spending a lot of time together, like we already don't, but we have a lot of work to do together over the next many weeks to construct this final budget for the county for the next two years. And I'm looking forward to working with everyone to develop that. So, Mr. Bokey, your opening comments.
Thank you, Chair Mello. Paul Bokey, council staff. Today is our first committee of the whole to consider the 2024-2025 biennial county budget. Today, we will have a budget overview with Mr. Gary Robinson, the Director of Finance, and Ms. Julie Demuth, the Assistant Director of Budget and Performance. We will start with the budget overview, and then we will go into the community engagement survey, and those should be both in your packets. And then we will do an overview of budget ordinances and resolutions, and I'll handle that. And then the Chair has some remarks about the budget schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Mr. Robinson, welcome.
Good afternoon. Gary Robinson, the Director of the County Finance Department. Julie and I are pleased to join you this afternoon to give you a summary of the executive's proposed budget for 2024-2025. This presentation will focus on the operating budget of the county. The capital budget will be reviewed in an upcoming council meeting. If we move to the slide deck and go to next slide, these are the main items that are shown on this slide that we'll go through. Some background on budget development we'll highlight for you, changes to the budget book, which hopefully many of you had a chance to look through, see the interactive capabilities of the budget book that's posted online. Reviewing then, the total budget for the county as proposed by the executive and the general fund budget. After that overview, we'll then review miscellaneous current expense, changes, and the items that are included in the executive's budget proposal for the utilization of the American Rescue Plan. As staff indicated, after that, we can make reference to the equity note and then move to the community's survey presentation. Going to the next slide, we'll concentrate on budget development, so next, please. As we shared with you at the beginning of the budget process earlier this year, the strategic plan for the county guided the preparation of the executive's 24-25 biennial budget proposal. We also focused on evaluating requests for new investments or budget reductions by reviewing equity impacts and expected performance with any changes. For the first time, the results of a community survey were also drawn upon to guide the budget decisions. Moving to the next slide, we have a listing of the key components of the strategic plan of the county. This slide you have seen in many other budget presentations presented by Finance Department and others, but the plan calls upon county government to build strong communities. This mission is accomplished by focusing on developing and sustaining vibrant communities, creating an entrepreneurial climate that fosters family wage careers, and ensuring that our programs are effective in the delivery of public services. The objectives that are associated with each of these priorities are shown on following slides. Here, they're highlighted in the chart and in the bulleted statements, and we'll go through components of those objectives, beginning with Slide 8. Next slide. Among those priorities are safe and just communities and happy and healthy people. On this slide and on subsequent slides, we identify the key additions that are included in the executive's budget for the next biennium for each of these objectives. The first slide here will cover safe and just communities, and we can see on this slide that there are funds allocated for hiring incentives, for shares and corrections, a continuation of an initiative that we started during the current biennium, funding to continue staff within our prosecuting attorney's office to support backlog cases and other legislative changes, additional funding for a conflict office within the assigned council, and that conflict office and the rationale behind it will be shared with you during a presentation made by the assigned council. New funding for community restoration and cleanup activities, $3 million in new funding for Small Business Safety and Security Program, and funding for the Civilian Review Board in association with the measure that council has been giving consideration to. In addition, specific funding for a county attorney to assist with abatement and cone enforcement activities of the Planning and Public Works Department. For healthy and happy communities, there is resources to continue our co-responder program, comprehensive plan to end homelessness, continuation of resources for the Pierce County Village, resources into the next biennium to address food insecurity, improvements to the regional trail system within our Parks and Recreation Department, and additional funding in the capital budget for parks and recreation facilities. There is, in addition, in partnership with the Bethel School District, resources for outdoor learning activities. Moving to the next slide, we will cover some of the new initiatives associated with clean and sustainable environment, attainable housing, and jobs and entrepreneurship. For clean, sustainable environment, there are resources to expand our electrical vehicle charging infrastructure, continued resources for fish habitat and burial removal, funding for conservation futures to continue acquisition of properties as we have in the past, and also resources for Washington Clean Building standard improvements for the facilities of our county. Attainable housing will continue the initiatives that we've had during the current biennium for affordable housing projects, affordable housing units, eviction prevention, and housing stability, comprehensive plan, periodic review, update, and implementation. In key here are resources to support the implementation of the new comprehensive plan once adopted, resources specifically for the county's contribution to the South Sound Housing and Affordability Partners Initiative, and resources for street lighting in low-income neighborhoods. On jobs and entrepreneurship, there's funding to continue the Business Accelerator Program through our Economic Development Department for two years in the next biennium, and funds to continue the Pierce County Community Navigator Program. Next slide, please. Here, we're highlighting some of the key initiatives in reliable and accessible infrastructure, skilled workforce, and regional leadership and tribal partnership. For reliable and accessible infrastructure, continuation of funds that are not anticipated to be spent in the current biennium for expanded broadband services within our county, continuation of the funds included in the American Rescue Plan allocation for the municipal sewer waters, our sewer systems, resources for Vision Zero Plan and the Active Transportation Plan at the Planning and Public Works Department, also resources to establish a water utility through our Planning and Public Works Department to provide water utility services as needed within the county, and resources for sidewalk improvements. On skilled workforce, we have resources continuing for adult internship and employment opportunities, aerospace and other key industry recruitment through our Economic Development Department, and then in regional leadership and tribal partnerships, funds for Cultureable Resource Protection Program, funding for the Gateway Project associated with State Route 167, water quality projects within our Planning and Public Works Department, and then continued support for the South Sound Military and Community Partnerships. And if we move to the next slide, we have accountability for results, customer-focused services, and talented and diverse employees. For accountability for results, there are resources for the Information Technology Division of the Finance Department to have a new software automation tool to assist with record storage and public records response, and resources, as I believe council has looked at in a request that was made by the Finance Department, for contract approval resources dependent upon your approval for a countywide budget and planning system. Customer-focused services is a new initiative for a countywide language access program to be able to engage with clients and members of the public for county services, funding to support additional capacity to enable better customer service for the new sewer billing system, resources within the Planning Division of the Planning and Public Works Department to provide an automated tool to guide applicants through the permit process, and additional resources into the next biennium, really carryforwarded resources from the current biennium to continue work on the new property tax collection system primarily for use by our Special Treasurers Office. Talented and diverse employees, funding associated with supported employment that would be administered through our Human Resources Department, and continued resources for employment training through the LinkedIn Learning and the Leadership Certification Program. The next slide, please. So those are highlights of the areas that are included in the executive's budget, primarily focusing on initiatives that have funds re-appropriated in the next biennium, and also areas that are new resources. As I was reviewing the themes in this section, there are many of the areas that are included in the executive's recommendation that do relate to the priorities that were set by the council. We reviewed your priorities as the executive's budget was being prepared, and in many of these categories, you'll see that resources are being provided either with regard to new initiatives or within the base budget for priorities that you had identified earlier in the year. So in sum, we looked at our strategy for the county. We looked at performance measures, which you can review as you're evaluating the department's budgets. So we are looking at what we're going to accomplish with the expenditure of funds that are included within our budget. And then county departments also brought forward information associated with the equity of their initiatives, which you could review in detail as you're going through with the county budget requests that come before you. We wanted to now move forward with a review of the budget book, and then Julie could move into further discussion on the overall budget by the total funds and the general fund component of the budget.
Thank you, Director Robinson. I'll just add, before we move on to the next section, thank you for providing an overview of what you're calling the strategic investments in the executive's proposed budget. Giving us a highlight here by category. Helpful to have it see it in this way. I'll just remind members, of course, we have department directors coming forward to brief us in significant detail on their base budgets. Many of these initiatives will be talked about in more detail during those discussions. So this is really, truly, an overview. We fully plan on going into detail. Of course, if there's interest in anything you've heard so far, we'll pause now for questions, but know that department directors are coming to go into more detail, and all of us are encouraged to get our questions to Ms. Chapman about anything at all. Ms. Chapman will collect our questions for follow-up, and we can organize it that way as well. But with that said, today is meant to ground us in the executive's proposal, at least at a high level. There's a lot more to come to be oriented to, but let's just pause there and see if there are any questions for Director Robinson about what we've heard so far. Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Will we be able to know what departments? You just went through some of the highlights of some of the program. Will we have an understanding of what department that project will be under?
Yes, Councilmember Morell. We also provided, as requested in the resolution that you adopted on the biennial budget, a list of every change that is included in the executive's budget proposal, and that listing is shown by department and fund source. So each of the items that identified for you here would be included in that list, which may have been distributed to your offices already, but it identifies both the requests that were made by departments, those requests that were approved to go forward in the executive's budget, and it's by department and also by fund source.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All of that was transmitted is a lot of information. We did ask for it, and we are going through it. It takes some time to go through it. I do, and I know budget staff sent it to all of our offices. I'll ask budget staff to make sure that every, we'll orient ourselves to the documents as we go along, but let's make sure every member does get oriented, and we'll probably do that as a group setting.
And Chair, if I may add, in the format that council has asked departments to present their budget, there is, in that format, a listing of what new initiatives are being brought forward by the department. The other documentation that we provided to council staff, which I believe has been distributed to your office, is the reductions that would be made in the department's base budget. As we stated, as we were beginning the budget process, we did look at reductions from 2% to 4% in departments' budgets. Departments, as they were presenting their budgets for the executive consideration, could ask that some of those funds be restored, or there be a modification in that reduction. And in the detail that you will have an opportunity to review, you'll see where there had been some adjustments to that across-the-board percent reduction that we initiated at the beginning of the process.
Let's proceed.
I might add one more comment on that detail. Julie and I did have the opportunity to meet with council staff on all of the changes related to the general fund, and I believe there is time that is scheduled to review all those changes in detail with council staff for the other funds, and we're available to go through that detail with you as a group or individually, too.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm Julie Demuth with the Finance Department, so I will get to go through the numbers with you today. Before we dive into the numbers, I just wanted to discuss the budget book a little bit. We had a really significant redesign of the budget book this year. We're excited with how the end product came out, and I just wanted to highlight a few items. So as we undertook this work, we focused on three primary areas. Sorry, next slide, please. So first, we wanted to ensure that the budget book adhered to Government Finance Officers' Association's best practices and their criteria for what's called the Distinguished Budget Presentation Awards Program. So every budget book that we produce is submitted to GFOA, and for many, many, many years, several decades at least, we have been awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Second, we focused on ensuring our budget book meets ADA guidelines. This was a big initiative of GFOA to make sure that the budget book's accessible. So this included changing our fonts to help improve readability, modifying our colors so that the colors were distinct, as well as links. So in the online version of the budget book, which I highly recommend you use, everything's linked, so you can link from the click-on table of contents, and it's going to take you to that particular page. So everywhere we could, we added hyperlinks to help navigate throughout the book. There's also search functionality, so if you're looking for a specific term, you can search for that term, and it'll take you to that throughout the budget book. So pretty excited about the online version. I think it's really usable. In addition, this presentation, we also included hyperlinks, too, so as you or the public is going through the presentation, you can click on the link, and it'll take you directly to certain pages within the budget book. I will note that ironically, the URL here to the budget book, it's correct, but the hyperlink doesn't work. It has the period in it, and so I apologize for that, but the URL is correct if you type it in. Finally, we wanted to help improve public understanding of the content, so you're really looking at the information that's presented. Not everyone has a fiscal background, and I know that this budget book can be pretty daunting for someone who doesn't have that type of background. So we really tried to make some improvements around understanding the content in there. So very excited about these updates. We hope that the budget book is more consumable and easier to navigate. I will note that GFOA also really emphasizes prettiness. So we added a lot of photos, so you'll see some great photos of the county and Pierce County throughout the budget book. One final note, too, is we also made some modifications to the budget ordinance, getting at Councilmember Hitchens' suggestion early on. So the funds are listed in alphabetical order now. Before, they were listed in order of their actual fund number, which you don't see in the ordinance, but it had this mysterious order to it. So they're categorized by fund type, and they're alphabetized within those fund types. So hopefully, that helps improve understandability as well. Next slide, please. Just wanted to highlight a couple of new items that we have in the budget book. We have QR codes. So throughout the budget book, you'll see QR codes. I'm still learning how to use these, but you know, you can use your camera on your phone, and it'll take you to specific websites. So it'll take you to a department website or particular areas within the county website. Workload service highlights as well. So in our prior budget book, there used to be a lot of data about workload service data and what we call performance ratios. We have taken the bulk of that information and consolidated it into an appendix at the back of the book from every section. It is hyperlinked, and it'll take you directly to that data, but just to help improve consumability, we have highlights of that workload service data included wherever a department or a fund has that information available. So it's all still there, but it's consolidated in an appendix. Right. Next slide, please. Okay, so for our budget overview, I'm going to start with the total county budget. Next slide, please. Since the 2018-2019 biennium, you'll see that the county's budget has nearly doubled in size. The 2024-25 budget is $1.4 billion, or 81% more than what we had in 2018 and 2019. Most of that growth has occurred in funds other than the general fund, so primarily in our capital projects funds and our special revenue funds. Since 2018 and '19, the general fund has grown 34%, or $225 million compared to all other funds, which has grown 108%, or $1.2 billion. So this significant increase in our budget is largely attributed to the influx of pandemic relief funding that we've received beginning in 2020, primarily CARES Act and ARPA funds, as well as all the new revenue sources that have become available. So that includes the housing and related services sales tax recently implemented, behavioral health and therapeutic court sales tax, PASTA, Puget Sound Taxpayer Accountability Funds is a relatively new revenue source, as well as our opioid settlement funds that we'll begin to see expended in the next biennium. Next slide, please. So I wanted to also start with some broad economic assumptions that were used in developing the 24-25 budget. So there's four primary assumptions, of course, a lot more surrounding this, but generally the broad themes are rising interest rates. So these rising interest rates will result in a period of slower economic growth. So we're already experiencing that. We see that in our sales tax collections this year, where our sales tax collections are, they have not grown above our 2022 levels. These higher interest rates will suppress our economic growth, particularly in our building and construction sectors, and these are two really important sectors within Pierce County. A lot of our economic growth is derived from the building and construction sectors. Sectors that are particularly sensitive to interest rates, such as the building and construction sectors, as well as the real estate market, these are significant drivers of our sales tax, of our REIT, or real estate excise taxes, recording fees, as well as impact fees. So as we head into the 24-25 biennium, we will see these revenues come in at lower levels than we've experienced in the last three years, returning to levels we've seen more around like the 2017-2018 level. So higher interest rates, however, also result in increased interest earnings revenue for us. So we have increased interest earnings attributed to higher rates, as well as right now, we have a larger fund balance within the general fund, so more is being invested, and we see a higher return on those investments. Finally, we do, at this point, anticipate moderate economic growth to return. Right now, we're estimating later in 2024. Of course, those reports come out daily as to when we might see a potential recession. It's still potentially in 2024, but we do expect growth to return later in 2024 and as we move into 2025. This growth, however, will be at a much lower level than, you know, the high growth we saw from 2020 through 2022. Next slide, please. So the table on this slide portrays the total county budget by fund type. So the budget includes 82 different funds, and you have detail on each of those funds throughout the budget book. And then within the general fund, there are a number of separate budgets within the general fund. Of the 82 different funds, the general fund is the largest fund. It accounts for 31% of our total county biennial budget. The budgets for each fund type reflect revenues that we anticipate to be available in 2024 and 2025, and they also reflect the planned use of fund balance as well. and 2025, and they also reflect the planned use of fund balance as well. So as you see on this slide, the decrease in special revenue funds, this reflects the spend-down of our one-time COVID-19 relief funding, reflects available grant funding, as well as other special revenue sources dedicated to specific purposes, and that includes REIT, recording fees, sales taxes, and a number of other dedicated revenue sources. The decrease in our debt service funds, that reflects payments going, you know, helping us bring down the county's debt. And then after a notable increase in capital projects funds in the current biennium, the 24-25 budget will see a slight decrease, as we've reported out, and as you know, many of the capital projects planned for this biennium have been delayed or rescheduled, and many of them are re-appropriated in the 24 and 25 budget. Increases in our enterprise and internal service funds are typical, as those budgets reflect the services that are provided internally to other county departments, as well as externally to residents and our external customers. And then finally, the custodial fund. This reflects the Tacoma-Pierce County Health Department. They are included in our total county budget. They're classified as a custodial fund. We don't have direct authority over their budget, but their budget is included as part of our total county budget. And their budget reflects a decrease, largely due to the decline in services that they provided during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Ms. Demuth, before you move on, I'm actually going to ask you to pause here. A lot of great information so far, and especially for those that haven't done a county budget before. I just want to make sure we understand it. I think you did a really good job of, at least at a high level, explaining the different fund types, the 82 different funds that make up our budget. But I just wanted to pause to make sure we're all on the same page, as much as we can be without being the budget director, what the difference is between a special revenue fund and an internal service fund versus an enterprise fund. So I just wanted to make sure we're going at a pace that is comfortable for everybody, and that we're not going too quickly, and that folks are, really feel comfortable asking their questions, and that it doesn't just sound like jargon to folks. Not that you're doing a very good job of explaining, but there's a lot of detail here. Councilmember Dentson, thank you for being brave in asking the first question.
I will take the opportunity to ask a question. You are doing a really good job, and I'm not anticipating to totally understand it to the level that you all do, but I will ask lots of questions. So on the slide that Chair Mello pointed to, it says 82 different funds, and then you have, what, seven fund types? So the 82 funds are within those seven fund types?
Yes, correct. So the general fund is a standalone fund, so this fund provides for general government services revenues that are not dedicated to a specific purpose or restricted for a specific purpose. The majority of our funds fall under the special revenue fund classification. So these are revenues that the county receives that are restricted for a specific purpose. So we can't take that revenue and just put it towards anything that we want. It has a specific purpose defined, and so there's an individual fund set up for each of those special revenue sources that are received.
Give an example, Ms. Demuth.
Sure. Housing and related sales tax. So that is a special revenue fund. The sales tax that we receive for that purpose is dedicated to affordable housing and other related services within the housing world. Behavioral health and therapeutic courts, that's a dedicated revenue source. Parks impact fees, dedicated. Our grant funds are dedicated to the purposes for which we receive those grants.
Juxtapose that to the enterprise funds.
Sure. So our enterprise funds, those operate more like a private business. So those are services that we provide to external customers. So an example here are our golf courses. Those are enterprise funds. We charge a fee to play a round of golf. We're providing services externally for which a customer pays a fee. The sewer utility, that's our largest enterprise fund. So we're providing sewer services, and our residents pay a fee for the sewer services that they receive.
Okay, and then the internal service fund, those are...
Those are funds for services that are provided internally to other county departments. So examples here is information technology. It's a dedicated funding source. The revenue that information technology receives is from other county departments paying to receive a service from IT. Other examples include our risk management funds, so that's our self-insurance fund, our workers' compensation fund. Facilities management, yes, thank you. So those are general services. So these are departments or entities that are providing services, not externally, but internally within the county.
Okay, and then last question, since it was top of mind for me this week. Under the special revenue funds, is that where the E911 fund is housed and the sales tax for emergency communications? Those are special revenue funds?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
I was going to ask the same question. Those are not, those don't fall under a custodial fund type. Those are special revenue funds.
Correct.
Is the Health Department the only custodial?
It's the only custodial fund included in our budget. It may be our only custodial fund, but I would have to check. We are the treasurer for many other districts, outside districts, but I, do you know if it's our only custodial?
The Health Department as a custodial fund is based upon a inter-local agreement that the county and Tacoma had at the time that the Health Department was established. And in the inter-local agreement, it specifies that the budget of the Health Department will be incorporated into the budget of the county. So as Julie noted, the budget of the Health Department is presented to us, and we bring it forward for the executive and the council for it to be included. That's the custodial fund that we have. The other resources that are in the county treasury are not viewed as custodial funds, but we do serve as the treasurer for many special districts, and that'd be very comparable to treasury functions that are done by other county governments under state law.
Thank you. Councilmember Dentson, thanks for being brave in asking those series of questions, so we can all get that learning together. One last question before we move on. The debt service fund here that we see, is this reflective of the debt that we're taking out to purchase 1501 and 1502 market and the debt to improve the Justice Center?
Yes, it is inclusive of that. The debt is paid by the general fund, so there is a transfer from the general fund into the debt service account, and then payments are made.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoover.
Thank you, Chair. And your question made me think of a question on the debt service. Are we in a line with most other governments, or are we ahead of the, in paying back debt, or is this average? Is it even something you would even track?
As far as payment of the debt, we, as other governments, have a schedule to pay our debt, similar to what we would have if we had a mortgage on our homes. So there are specific times that the debt is to be paid, and it's variable based upon when the debt is issued. As Julie noted, the debt that is paid for an improvement in the sewer utility would come from the sewer utility ratepayers. Debt that's paid for the new building that we recently purchased is coming from the general fund. The other way that debt can be measured is the debt capacity that a government is authorized to incur is set forth within state law, and we, as a county, are on the lower end of debt capacity utilization in comparison to other jurisdictions.
Do we ever set this up to maybe pay them off sooner, or maybe because the interest rates are low, and it's more beneficial to just make the minimum payments, or...
Yeah, when the county goes to market to borrow funds and enter into an agreement for a bond, the agreement that we enter into with those that are lending us money can have terms associated with when the debt can be refinanced. So when those terms are achieved, we will work with our financial advisor to see if it's cost-beneficial for the county to refinance, similar to what a person would do with individual debt for a mortgage. Those are reviewed at the time that we're getting close to when we have the authorization to refinance. Say in a 30-year bond, you might have an opportunity to refinance within 10 years, possibly within 15 years. We did refinance some of the debt at the county when interest rates were real low, as we were coming out of the prior recession, but do not have, I think at least for a few years, an opportunity to enter into a refinancing agreement with the bonds that we still have outstanding.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this could be Gary or Julie. You kind of explained a little bit about enterprise funds. My question pertains to our airports. You said that the enterprise funds are set up like a business would do, balance sheets, you know, money in, money out, et cetera. We run a very low return on those airports. How do we build up capital matches in those accounts if everything has got to be kept internal as far as matches go for the FAA or whatever? How would we approach that forward-thinking if we, in the case of Thun Field, we have a whole runway we've got to replace, and that's going to come up, and we don't have a match? How do we, I mean, can you take money from the general fund and put, okay, explain that?
Yes, and in fact, in the current biennial budget, as well as the 24-25 biennial budget, the match for the FAA grants for these capital projects is provided by the general fund. I think the change that occurred recently is the FAA is not providing the level of funding that they originally stated they would, so now that there is a need to provide a greater match from the county. So we have to work to identify those funding sources. But the general fund can provide the match for these grants.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're there again forward-thinking on this. I know on the Narrows Airport, we actually could not meet a match recently and had to give up our position for those funds and downsize our request to be able to meet it. So I just want to make sure that they're again in the budget somewhere, there's going to be matches for these upcoming projects.
Did you want to add anything?
In addition to the match resources that Julie identified for county funds, for the airports, there are match funds provided by the state. So customarily, the match amount, half would be paid for by the county, half would be paid for by the state. For the airports, as Julie noted, we have used general fund. If there were fund balances with an airport account that could cover the cost of the match, that is another source. And then quite a few years ago, probably 12, 14 or more years ago, there was a loan to cover some of the cost of the airports that was then paid off by the general fund, because there was not an accumulation of enough resources from airport revenue in order to cover that debt service. And so that was a choice that was made in a budget, in effect, to have the general fund cover that cost.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay, next slide, please. So this slide provides, at a very high level, our expenditure budget by major category and functional area. So as you'll see, operational costs are the largest category of expenditure for the county at $1.2 billion, or 36% of the total budget. Personnel costs are a close second at $1.1 billion, or 35% of the budget. Countywide, you know, expenditures, very diverse. General government services are our largest category of expenditures, followed by public safety, utilities, transportation, and then our social services activities. Next slide, please. So shifting from expenditures to our funding sources are our revenues. Tax revenues are the largest source of funding for the county, making up 30% of our total revenue budget. Charges for services is the second-largest category of revenue at $684 million, followed by intergovernmental revenue at $500 million. Of the, remember of the $970 million in tax revenue budgeted for '24 and '25, property tax accounts for half of that, 50%, or around $480 million, and 46% is from retail sales and use taxes, $449 million. Next slide. So this slide focuses on property tax. Property tax is levied for six different purposes. We have the general levy, which goes into the general fund and supports our general government services. Law enforcement, which also goes into the general fund to support our law enforcement services. And then we have conservation futures, social services, and veterans' relief. So in 2024, the county's total assessed valuation will increase, but not by much. It's increasing from $193.4 billion in 2023 to $194 billion, so only a 0.3% change in our assessed valuation from 2023. If you look in the budget book, it provides a historical chart of our assessed valuation, and over the past several years, we've had much more significant increases in our total assessed valuation. So this accounts for new construction and improvements as well. So we still have the ability to levy the 1% increase in our property tax, but just an interesting point, that our assessed valuation didn't increase as much as it has increased in prior years. In this budget process, and I'm sure Mr. Bulkey will go through this in more detail later, you will see three separate ordinances for the ad valorem ordinances, one for the general levy, one for the conservation futures levy, and one for veterans' relief. This was a requirement of the Department of Revenue, the State Department of Revenue, as conveyed to us by the Assessor Treasurers Office. Next slide, please. So shifting to sales tax. So sales tax accounts for 46% of the county's total revenue budget. This includes a total of $449 million in projected sales tax revenue for the next biennium. Sales tax provides funding for the county's general fund, as well as several special revenue funds for which sales tax is programmed for a specific purpose. So the sales tax category includes revenue from retail sales and use taxes, which includes excise taxes, such as our lodging excise tax, the state-enhanced E911 tax, and the local E911 excise tax. It also includes our Puget Sound Taxpayer Accountability, or PASTA, funds as well. For sales tax, as we've reported to you previously this year, the current budget does include a projection of 0% growth in sales tax in 2023. So this is growth over our actual collections in 2022. We are currently forecasting a 3.7% growth in 2025 over actual collections in 2023, and a 5.1% growth in 2024. So through September, we do have preliminary September sales tax numbers. Sales tax collections are $2.4 million below budget in 2023, and are $278,000 below the first nine months of 2022. So we are trending at that 0% or even lower level. Should sales tax continue declining through the last quarter of 2023, this would have an impact not only on our current budget, but our 2024 and 2025 sales tax projections as well.
Can we ask you to pause there before we move away from the sales tax? Couple of questions here, Ms. Demuth. Can you... questions here, Ms. Dimuth. Can you clarify the difference between the emergency communications sales tax, sales tax, S.O.S. 911 fund and the 911 system fund?
Yes. The emergency communications sales tax is the 1/10th of 1% sales tax that comes in for the purposes of emergency communications. The E-911 system fund is the fund that manages our public safety radio system, and we do have some external customers that utilize those public safety radios as well. So that accounts for management of our radio systems operation.
Those are two different sales taxes at the, or?
The E-911 fund has revenue coming in it. So when you pay your cell phone bill each month, you have a whole lot of taxes on there. Part of that is the state enhanced E-911 fee. We also have a local E-911 fee, so that helps fund those radio systems.
So that's that middle one, the 911 system fund?
Correct. Yes. There's also a 70%, what's your 70 cent?
Seven cents.
Okay.
And why is the emergency communications sales tax fund, it's the 1/10th of 1% that the voters of Pierce County approved a number of years ago, over a decade ago now? Why is that so much, I think I know the answer, but I want to hear you say it. Why is that $52 million and why are the other 1/10th of 1% sales tax funds significantly lower in collections?
Has to do with the geographic area for which the sales tax is collected. So the emergency communications sales tax collected countywide.
Including Tacoma.
Correct. Yes.
And the behavioral health and housing related services funds do not include Tacoma.
Correct.
So that's the delta there?
Yes.
That really explains the delta, right? And one more question, then I'll open up to others. The affordable, the last item, the Affordable and Supportive Housing Tax Fund, are these what we call the 1406 funds? Are these the sales tax rebate essentially?
Yes.
So it's not really a new tax, it's?
Correct.
It's a refund from what otherwise would go to the state general fund?
Correct.
Comes, comes to?
To the county.
The county for this, for this purpose?
Yes.
Still a sales tax, but a sales tax that otherwise would go to the state general fund, we've indicated we want to retain it here for the purposes of affordable and supportive housing. Other questions? Councilmember Denson?
Thank you. You lost me a little bit on the 911 system funds. So I understand the emergency communications sales tax fund is countywide. The 911 system fund, where is that collected?
Through wireline and wireless services.
That's the cell phone bills?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions on this slide? Thank you for pausing, Ms. Dimuth.
Next slide, please. Okay, so shifting away from revenues, we'll go to staffing. So the 202425 budget includes a total of 3,369 budgeted FTEs or full-time equivalents. This includes just over 1,900 FTEs in the general fund and 1,456 FTEs across all of our other funds. Staffing is reduced by a total of 42 FTEs within the general fund. As part of the general fund budget reductions that were implemented in the '24 and '25 budget, there are 39.6 vacant positions within the general fund that are proposed to be closed. In addition to that, 5.3 FTEs are reallocated from the general fund to other funding sources. That's in planning and public works, our planning and code enforcement division, and then in parks and recreation. So they were able to, as part of their budget reductions, shift some of their FTEs to their other funding sources that they have available. For our other funds, FTEs are increased by a total of 61. So with those other revenue sources, we were able to add an additional 37 positions within our human services department, 26 positions within planning and public works, nine within parks and recreation, and eight within facilities management. Those are the more significant increases. Next slide, please.
And just in case folks are worried about not tracking, all of that is enumerated very clearly in the budget book. There's the FTE count by department in the budget book. So just, all of that detail is in the budget book. And Mr. Bokey or Ms. Chapman can ease the guide folks in how to read the budget book if you're not familiar.
Yes, we do track our FTEs down to the hundredth of a decimal.
And you can see the delta. So I guess I want to make this just a little bit more clear. You can see the change in FTE count from biennium to biennium in the budget book.
Yes. And just as an additional note, the staffing summaries will also reflect changes that occur during the biennium. So if a department has a need to reclassify a position from one job classification to another, that's reflected in the staffing summary as well. So you may see not necessarily a change in FTEs, but a change in the types of FTEs that a department has.
I'm sorry if you just said this, and I don't have my budget, shame on me, I don't have my budget book in front of me. Does the FTE count by fund, is it articulated by fund in the budget book?
By fund and then within the general fund by department. Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. In regards to FTEs, I'm going to think about like our allied security. Are they FTEs under this or are they are through a contract?
Correct. They're through, they're contracted services, so they're not reflected.
Okay. I was just curious then, how many, how many contracted employees do we have? Is that somewhere a number that would be findable?
Uh, we don't, well.
I'm sure you could.
Yes, I'm sure we could.
Okay.
I don't know that we want you to, unless someone really wants that information. We have a lot of contracted services for all kinds of services.
We do janitorial services, security services.
Human services.
There's a lot of, like, people think they're all county employees. And so when we see the 3,369, and they see people like, okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that I was.
In addition to that, we have a number of extra hire, what we call extra hire employees that are, they come in to perform a temporary, a function on a temporary basis, typically three to six months, might be seasonal work such as for parks and recreation. We do have a large number of extra hire positions as well. The budget book reflects our budgeted FTEs. So it's an ongoing, typically a career service type FTE. It does not reflect extra hires.
So if I was trying to, so where would that come out of a budget? For instance, Parks and Rec acquires for like fantasy lights, extra staff, in the summer they bring in extra grounds people. Is that just out of their general operating budget or?
Yes. So it's included in their overall expenditures. It falls under the salaries category that you'll see in there.
Okay, that could explain some of the math I was coming up with. People are being paid a lot. So, I mean, they're worth it, but I was just dividing by FTEs and getting some really ridiculous numbers.
The salaries category includes not only standard compensation, but it includes overtime, holiday pay, all the special pays, extra hire. So it's a larger category.
That was one of my random questions that I wanted to find out, but thanks, that helps. I'll take it off my list. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions about this slide before we move on? Thank you, Ms. Dimuth.
All right. And the final slide here on staffing looks at our county staffing by functional area. As you can see on the slide here, criminal justice functions account for nearly half of the county's total staffing and 80% of staffing within the general fund. General government functions account for 17% of the county's total staffing, followed by transportation at 12% and social service activities at 9%. Some of the data that we do track and look at is per capita information. So in looking at county staffing levels over the year compared to population growth, staffing levels have remained largely consistent with our growth in population over the past 10 years. So as our population has grown, we have increased county staffing with roughly about three and a half budgeted FTEs per 1,000 residents within our county. I believe this concludes the section on the total county budget. So happy to answer questions or else we can shift to the general fund budget.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Dimuth, a question about the budget book. The, we have for a while when we use this tool, when changes are made or amendments are made, we don't track it in here. Because we've gone to an online version, is the intent to edit that as, as things happen, as we make changes?
I can tell you with this particular budget book, no. It's built out in in design.
Okay.
So updating it is a task.
I know how hard that can be.
Yes. As we look at our new budgeting system that we hope to implement in 2024, it does have functionality where it connects to an online budget book. So there is the potential there that as the county budget is amended throughout the year, we could automatically update that version of the online budget book. Likely, it's not going to be as pretty as what we have now, but that is in scope of what we would be looking to implement and building out those connections so that as data is updated in the budgeting system, it could then update what's available online.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. I was hopeful and, but thought I'd ask because it's something we, pretty regularly when we have to go back between all the different documents to track what's changed. And I know your department does the same thing, so it's hard to explain to the public when they're trying to figure out what's going on. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay. So we will shift to the general fund budget. Next slide, please. So the 202425 proposed general fund budget is $889 million. This is a 2.4% increase over our current biennial budget, an increase of $21.1 million. As you can see on this slide, ongoing salary and benefit costs drive a significant portion of our general fund budget. It accounts for 69% or $610 million of our total expenditures within the general fund. That's the dark blue color that you see on the slide. This is a 32% increase from the 2018 to 19 level and an 8.4% increase over our current biennial budget level. The brighter blue color that you see on the slide represents our operational costs. So these are supplies, services, all the costs that it takes to operate our, and provide our services. This accounts for $252 million of our proposed general fund budget or 28% of the budget. This is also a 28% increase from 2018 and 19, and actually a slight 9% decrease from '22 and '23. Intergovernmental services are $26.9 million of our total general fund budget. Intergovernmental services typically remains largely consistent over the years. This category includes health services, which is our transfer to the Tacoma-Pierce County Health Department, law enforcement services that we provide through contracts with other jurisdictions, animal control services such as that. Next slide, please. So looking at general fund expenditures by functional area, criminal justice functions account for 76% of our total general fund budget or about $674 million for the biennium. Public safety in particular is the highest category at $434 million or nearly half of the general fund budget. This is followed by legal and judicial services, which accounts for 27% of the general fund budget or $240 million. And then general government functions, which would include services such as those provided by the Assessor Treasurers Office, the Auditor's Office, finance, human resources. Those account for $140 million of the general fund budget or about 16% of the total budget. Next slide, please. So this slide provides a little bit of a historical comparison of these expenditure categories. Public safety and legal and judicial services reflect increases over the current biennium, while you'll see decreases in other functional areas. So as you know, to address our lower levels of revenue growth as well as our rising compensation and operating costs, departments within the general fund, departments supported by the general fund were reduced by 2% to 4% each year in the proposed budget. Some of these resources were reallocated to support public safety and our legal and judicial services, which is why you see an increase in those categories and decreases in some of our other categories. As you look at the detail in the budget book and as departments come forward to present their budgets, you'll see that most general fund department budgets still reflect an increase over the current biennium. This is due to the large increase in costs we've had associated with compensation, benefits, as well as other operating costs. There are a handful of departments that will reflect decreases. These are largely attributed to one-time funding that was included in the current biennial budget. So examples there would include the Auditor's Office, which had $10 million budgeted this biennium for an election center. So that funding has been transferred for that purpose and their 2425 budget, you know, shows a nearly $10 million decrease. Another example is emergency management, which had a significant increase in the current biennium to account for COVID relief funding and services that they provided in 2022. Next slide, please.
Just ask you to pause there, Ms. Dimuth. Councilmember Merrill?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just had a question. Where would I find the self-insured risk management pool? Because we've had some challenges as of late in funding that. Is that in here somewhere?
It is. So the, those are separate funds. They are internal service funds. So you'll see separate budgets for them in the budget book. Where it shows up here is in the rates that get charged to departments. So part of our increased costs, particularly within the sheriff department, is to account for increased workers' compensation claims and costs that we are experiencing as well as other, other claims against the county. So those departments pay rates to those, to those funds. It's based on current, current and historical experience. So as a department has an increase in the number of claims or the value of claims, that gets reflected in the, in the costs that they are charged in the next biennium.
So within public works, they have a line item that shows that somewhere?
Yes. All, all 82, or nearly all, not all. Most of our county funds are charged a precalculated cost. So we develop those precalculated costs early in the year. We started that work in January of this year, where we develop rates that are charged to department budgets. That's one of the, the first steps in building our base budget.
Okay. And you use history and, and as far as that goes. So moving forward, you're, are you, are we assuming that they're going to be at a certain level? Or is there a fund that covers if we exceed?
Yes. So, yes. So we, we use our current claims experience, historical claims experience, as well as information that we have on our obligations. So outstanding obligations and potential obligations that we would have. So all of that information is factored into determining the costs that need to be charged to department. Those funds, you know, they come out of department budgets, they're moved into the funds for risk management, and they're held in the fund balance within risk management accounts. So as claim costs are paid out, it's risk management that pays those costs and it comes from their fund balance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're ready to go to the next slide, please. So wanted to just spend a little bit of time focusing on our general fund budget reductions. So as mentioned, the goal of these reductions within the general So as mentioned, the goal of these reductions within the general fund was to primarily slow the rate of our budget growth. We've had pretty significant growth in our expenditures within the general fund over the last several years. And those expenditures are now exceeding the revenues that we have available. So through the budget reductions, we, we looked at slowing the rate of growth of our expenditures and to begin aligning our expenditures with available revenues and the revenues that we're projecting to have available in future years. So base budgets were reduced by a total of $26 million for the biennium, or approximately $13 million each year. In the first column of this slide that provides those amounts, that each operating department within the general fund was reduced. Departments submitted information on what areas they reduced in their budget. So while we, we indicated how much their budget had to be reduced, departments went in and identified where they would take those reductions. So they provided information on where and how they reduce their budget, as well as the impact of those reductions, so that we could understand how this would impact services going forward. Departments were asked to bring reductions forward that would have the least impact on the delivery of critical public services. So we asked for reductions to initially focus on lowering administrative costs or reducing our less effective programs. The reductions that were brought forward focused primarily on reducing discretionary costs. So, so costs such as supplies, professional services, travel and training. So many departments reduced spending in those categories. Reductions were also brought forward to close vacant positions as well. So as, as you know, over the last several years, the general fund generates a large amount of vacancy savings each year due to our, due to challenges in filling those vacant positions. This has resulted in an increase in our general fund reserve. But by closing, you know, some of those vacant positions, this really allows us to have more accurate budgeting and financial planning. And this allows us to really focus on where we are allocating our limited resources. So the impact of these reductions were reviewed through the budget process. And as you'll see in the middle column there, certain budgetary items were restored to minimize the impact on critical public services. So in total, $7 million, or about $3.5 million each year in funding was restored for some departments, bringing the total budget reduction amount to $20 million for the biennium, or roughly $10 million each year. So these reductions, coupled with the, with our planned spend down of our general fund reserves, this helps ensure that the general fund budget is balanced and it helps us take those first necessary steps to begin aligning our county's expenditures with our available revenues. It is important to note that while reductions, these reductions take that important first step, it doesn't solve our general fund budget deficit. Our, our expenditures still exceed our revenues and we do have a need to draw upon our fund balance over the next several years in order to balance our budget. So the '24-'25 budget includes the use of $42.6 million in fund balance to support increased costs. This is different than the current biennium. So the current biennium, we had about $60 million in use of fund balance budgeted. These were for one-time purposes, capital projects, one-time initiatives. The difference in the next biennium is we are using our fund balance to balance our budget and to provide for our operating costs and our services. Next slide please.
Ms. Demuth, before you get into general fund reserves, I want to make sure we understand this budget fund, this general fund budget reduction slide please. How do, one could, could read this and have trouble reconciling the previous slide and this slide. So the, the previous slide looks, tells a story about public safety having an 8.1% increase biennium over biennium.
Yes. Good, good point. So the, when the base budgets were built, we have to assume increase in costs for compensation, for benefits, for all of our pre-calculated costs and charges. All of that was built into the base budget. So by default, our '24-'25 budget was much higher than '22-'23. The budget reductions reduce off of that higher level of budget. So it, it reduces the total biennial budget by $20 million, but our, our overall increase in costs and compensation was much more than that. So, so I noted earlier, you'll, you'll actually see most department budgets have an increase in their budget over the current biennium and that's to account for, for our increased costs.
Making sure that makes sense? Thank you. I'll ask you to pause. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I just wanted to check on the budget reductions for Clerk of the Court, the $698,000. Is that, it's restored probably, because I'm, when I recall the record retention that they have and that needs to be put into a database, is, is that part of why that's restored or?
The Clerk of the Superior Court has a, a conservative budget. So the budget reductions that they identified reduced filled positions and it impacted their ability to provide services to our courts and to the public. That's, so the positions were restored. It was mostly the positions that accounted for their budget reduction.
For what they need to do, because I, I was glad to see that. So, okay. Thank you.
Revenues? Okay. Shifting to general fund revenues. Again, tax revenues are our largest source of funding within the general fund. So about 67% or $600 million of the revenue budget is from property tax and sales taxes. Property tax is projected to provide $328 million in revenue over the biennium and sales tax is projected to provide $270 million. As we know, sales tax can be quite volatile, but that's, that's our current forecast right now. The next largest category of revenue are our charges for services at $112 million, followed by miscellaneous revenue at $54 million. This category largely reflects our interest earnings. And then intergovernmental revenue is budgeted at $48 million for the biennium. Next slide please. So this slide is one you have seen before. This shows general fund revenues as a percent of the total revenue budget excluding use of fund balance. So just looking at our actual revenues. 2017 through 2020 and 2021 reflect actual collections or actual revenue. '22, '23, and then '24 and '25 reflect budget. So this data is, is always very interesting to look at because it, it shows the, the composition and the shifting dynamics of our revenue sources. So property tax is and has stor, has historically been our largest revenue category within the general fund. However, it, it's limited. So it's limited to that 1% growth on existing property each year, plus the value of new construction and improvements. Because of this limit, property tax, it really can't keep up with the growth of our county's expenses. So due to that, we have a growing reliance upon our sales tax revenue within the general fund. So as you can see, sales tax has shifted from 25% of our revenue budget in 2017 to 32% of our revenue budget in 2022, '23, as well as '24 and '25. So, sales taxes, we know, it's very sensitive to our economic conditions. As the economy expands or contracts, we see our sales tax revenue do the same. So even a very minor recession or a period of no growth as we're experiencing right now, it can have significant impact on our sales tax collections. So sales tax is an area that we monitor very closely. We do anticipate our period of no growth in sales tax to continue through the rest of 2023 and into early 2024. Currently, our, our sales tax forecast model does indicate a return to a, a moderate level of growth later in 2024 and then higher growth in 2025. Charges for services as a percent of the revenue budget declined slightly in '24 and '25 from 14% to 13%. And similarly, intergovernmental revenues also declined from 7% to 6%. Interest and other revenue, you see the large increase there. That's attributed to our projected interest earnings in the next biennium. And then license and permits and fines and forfeitures declining as a percent of our total revenue budget. So the main takeaway from this slide is that here within the county, we have a growing reliance on sales tax to fund, you know, our essential county services. Next slide please. So this slide shows our percent change in our general fund revenues from biennial period to biennial period. Overall, general fund revenues are anticipated to be 4.3% higher than our '22-'23 estimated level, which reflects moderate increases in our tax revenues and more significant increases in our interest earnings. Next slide please. Moving to the general fund reserve or our fund balance. So several factors, including a strong economy, favorable revenues, as well as significant under expenditures have resulted in the increase in our unassigned general fund balance in recent years, as you see on these charts. The 2022-23 budget, as I mentioned, included about $60 million in use of fund balance, with most, most of that going to one-time initiatives and capital expenditures. Due to significant under expenditures within our general fund this biennium, largely due to the high level of vacancies we've had within the Sheriff's Department, but also broadly across county government. We are projecting that we will not utilize any fund balance this biennium, but rather we will add about $17 million to our ending fund balance. So that's our current projection. With the reductions that are proposed for '24 and '25 and with the closing of nearly 40 vacant positions, we do anticipate beginning to draw down that fund balance reserve beginning in the next biennium. Next slide please. So this is the final slide I have for you on the general fund to date. This is our long-term projection model. So the green line you see on this slide reflects our revenue and the blue line reflects our expenditures. So as you can see, currently our expenditures exceed our projected revenues for the next several years. This is why budget reductions were implemented in the '24 and '25 budget. So this long-range financial plan uses our budget reductions, as I mentioned, to slow the rate of expenditure growth. And it also includes the planned spend down of our general fund reserve, not only in the next biennium, but for the next several years thereafter. If revenues continue to grow at, at a moderate rate, which we hope that they do, and expenditure growth continues to be limited, as you can see on here, it will still take an additional three biennia or another six years for our revenues to begin to align with our expenditures. So we are really looking to resolve a long-term issue here within the general fund. Aside from the economic slowdown we're currently experiencing and we anticipate will continue into 2024, the long-term projection model assumes moderate growth in revenues. So this assumes that year over year, we will continue to have a moderate rate of growth with our revenues. It does not account for any sort of future recessionary activity. So should we experience an actual recession or even another slowdown, a period of no growth, that of course alters our long-range projection. So there's always a variety of changes that could occur that impact this long-term projection. That includes significant changes in our expenditures, whether it's an increase or an under expenditure. And then of course, any significant increase or decrease in our revenue sources. But with the data we have available currently and our understanding of the current economic environment, the 2024-2025 budget as proposed is balanced and it adheres to our county's fund balance policy, not only in the next biennia, but in future years as well. I will, one final note I will make is that with our recent bond rating upgrade by Moody's to AAA, having a sufficient fund balance now and into the future is very critical for us to maintain that rating. And I will also say that there are many AAA jurisdictions that have a much higher fund balance policy than what we currently have as well. So more in the, we've seen even 25% to 35% range is standard for many of the other AAA jurisdictions.
Councilmember Morell?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. You just alluded to something with, on the fund balance reserve, is there a policy or is there something in charter that says we must maintain? Is it a percentage or how is that defined?
It's defined as 10% of next year's operating budget. That's the minimum threshold with a goal of maintaining a 15% fund balance percentage.
Okay. So when we went through...
Mr. Bokey wants to add to the...
Yeah. Years ago, the, coming out of the Great Recession, the council passed a resolution. It needs an update, but we leave that up to the council and the goal was 15%. That has been reached a number of years ago as shown on, in this slide. And Ms. Demuth is correct, the, the evolving, there is evolving talk in, in the, on the municipal finance side as to what a proper or what, you know, goal is. They really put it into days, which is about the minimum of 60 days, I think, is what everybody's saying now. It should be about 16%. So you're well in excess of that. I saw a presentation where they now do bands, where they do an upper band and a lower band and you want to be in that with the upper band being somewhere where you would set it and the lower part of the band being your minimum. Because there's, there's, you know, changes in, in things. It's something that the council may want to discuss at some point in time in the future about updating that policy because it is an older policy. The, the unofficial goal back in the day was 10%. So the, the resolution was written as we got to get back up to 10% because coming out of the Great Recession, I believe we were below it. That would prove difficult, actually. I'll, I'll, I'll tell you as one who was there, that, that at times, because the county is so dependent upon the property tax coming in twice a year, the end of April and the end of October, cash flow becomes very tight when the sales tax really was doing very poorly in, in that point in time. Now that's history. It doesn't have to necessarily repeat itself. So that's why the 15% came in. The council considered various options. They decided on a 15%. I like to always put things in days. That gets you to about 50 days. That has really served us well. I, I think the, the most recent time being when COVID hit. You didn't have to make a lot of decisions right away about cutting the budget or various things like that because of our, the number of vacancies we already had and we could save money and we also had that fund balance to fall back on. So it has been proven to be very valuable with that 15% and we've been well in excess of that for a while now. And there, but there are other options at some point that the council could consider.
Okay. Yeah. Because that, that was my follow-up question was during the Great Recession. You know, what did we learn as a takeaway because of that in our budgeting process? And I think Mr. Bokey kind of said it. So we, we have kind of a sweet spot that we like to be at, which is what percentage?
Well, I would say a minimum of 15%. I feel more comfortable in a, at a slightly higher level. 20% to 25%. I think we have a, an evolving world where we're responding to more disasters, more occurrences that are not planned. So that, that fund balance helps us to, not only to respond to those types of incidents, but should we have a recession or even a period of growth, we don't have to resort to layoffs right away. We're able to maintain county services. So that fund balance, as Mr. Bokey mentioned, really helped us during the, the COVID pandemic where early on, we had no idea what to expect. Early on, our sales tax revenue declined pretty significantly. It, it went up luckily. You know, it went up, luckily, but, but we didn't have to lay anyone off during those, those unknown periods of time.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that explanation. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schrempf.
I think the other point to make is, what we're hearing from the finance department is there's an intentional plan to draw down the fund balance, and in order, because revenues aren't keeping up with expenses for the foreseeable future, even in this proposed biennial budget, there's a drawdown of the fund balance intentionally. And that is expected to happen over the next couple biennia at a minimum. So there is an intentional drawdown of the fund balance. So if we drew it down to 15% with, with this expenditure plan in this next biennium, A, we would give Gary Robinson a heart attack, B, we would not have the dollars available to make the intentional drawdown over the next couple few biennia to stabilize our expenses and needed public services in the community. So, right, so 31.6% at the end of 2025 might sound like a lot of money, but it's, it's, there is a plan to draw it down in '26, '27, '28, '29.
We would have to see an extraordinary increase in our sales tax revenue to not draw down our fund balance in future years. Our long-range forecast right now, we, we have a long-term sales tax assumption of 5.6%. This is derived from what we've calculated to be average growth for the county. So it's a slightly higher level than we've had in prior years, but that, that's our long-range sales tax forecast.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Chair Melo. Couple items to dovetail on that, and it's been mentioned a couple of times. So the, the, for a long time, the sky is falling, so the finance people, including budget people like myself, right, you have that 1% property tax limitation measure out there, 1% plus new growth. The county has had a lot of new growth, so you've been able to maintain that number closer to the rate of inflation, like probably an average of about 3% a year. You can't always count on that, especially when recessions hit. As we become more and more dependent upon the sales tax, we're also now subject to its variations, right, which, things are shut down because of COVID. It dropped off a cliff for a month, right? And so you, again, that's why you have to start thinking about, is 15% still a number that works for us? Because going forward, the variations in revenue, as you become more dependent upon the sales tax, the variations in revenue are, your, I guess it's beta, starts to increase more, right? You're going to go up more sometimes, and you're going to go down more other times. I would also note that other sources of revenue have really, really not done well. One of them would be fines and forfeitures for a variety of reasons. Fines and forfeitures have dropped. It used to be something we could count on, a fairly steady number. That number has really gone away and probably will never come back. I don't think it's going to come back for a long, long time, if ever. There's intergovernmental revenue, you know, the state is under some of the same limitations that we are. The federal government also has a lot on its plate. So you'll see the intergovernmental revenues, if you take COVID out of it, haven't really gone up all that much. So the other sources of revenue, except now for interest revenues, have, are really almost in this long-term pattern of stability or decline. So we really are becoming more and more dependent upon that sales tax number, and will probably continue to be going forward, which increases our risk.
Councilmember Morrell.
Just to follow up on that, do we collect sales tax on land sales in the county?
Not sales tax, no. It would fall under our real estate excise tax.
So it's only excise tax?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't forward-thinking budget what could be coming up on developments that happened within the county, do we?
Not in a, in a long-term way. The Assessor Treasurers Office provides us with their estimates of new construction and improvement for the next year, but beyond that, no, we don't necessarily have insight into that.
Okay. So if we have some large industrial developments that are going on right now, which is going to take 24 months to bring, to, to build out, we don't forecast those necessarily in our budgets?
No. We've done some preliminary work within the finance department to begin looking at that, at the potential impacts on property tax in the future, given the type, types of land that we have available that's vacant, that's still to be built out. But we're not to a point yet where we would include that forecast in our budget.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schrempf.
Thank you. Are there other questions before we move on to the miscellaneous current expense portion of the presentation? Thank you, Ms. Demuth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So if we move to the next slide, we have a summary of the miscellaneous current expense proposal that's included in the executive's budget. We've discussed in a few previous council meetings that now that COVID-19 emergency orders are no longer in effect, we need to ensure that the county follows the procurement practices that are prescribed, both in state law, the county charter, and the county ordinances. With COVID-19, many of those prescriptions were able to be waived because of those emergency orders. These standards do preclude the direct allocation of county funds, except for lower dollar amounts. The miscellaneous current expense budget that is before you combines allocations into four major categories that are shown on this slide. So rather than identifying individual direct allocations, these are categorized based upon, look at the average amount that was allocated to these functions in prior budgets. So community events, festivals, and memorials, there is a proposed appropriation of $600,000. Cultural heritage and preservation, proposal of $3,450,000. Resources for food insecurity, primarily capital, $300,000. And for playgrounds or recreational services, $732,000, for a total of just over $5 million. So with this type of approach, these allocations would then be identified for community groups to submit responses, to request for proposals. So there's an opportunity for groups to bring forward areas that they would have an interest in the county providing support for, and then the allocations would be based upon a competitive process. So different approach than we've had for miscellaneous current expense for these community-type of allocations. As is shown on the left-hand side, side of this slide, we do have a membership dues that are included in miscellaneous current expense. These are dues for our membership, for example, in the Association of Counties. That's been included. That can be a direct allocation, because it's going to a entity for which the county is receiving services as a quasi-governmental entity. Miscellaneous current expense also had allocations primarily to fire districts, with resources being payment in lieu of taxes that are received by, from the federal government, and then some expenses that are more specialized or don't fit into a specific department budget. Examples there are the Essex Commission funding for severance, as it be to pay for leave buyouts for departments that don't have capacity, to pay for a leave buyout, particularly at the time that a person is retiring, and also some resources that are set aside for unemployment compensation payments for departments that don't have capacity to make those payments, primarily smaller departments. We'll point out that in the executive's proposal, there are resources identified in miscellaneous current expense to support the administration of the transition to a new executive, which will occur during the time period that this budget is, is in effect. Chair, as you noted in the meeting the other day-
I didn't hear the last thing you said.
Traditionally, the county has set aside resources to support the transition of a new executive coming into office. So it'd be resources that could be used by the executive-elect to support their transition activities. The amount that is included in the executive's proposal is $50,000, and it's very comparable to the amounts that have been included in prior budgets when there's a transition time period.
Thank you for explaining that. We have a number of questions before we move off of the miscellaneous current expense. We'll start with Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Being that this is new, under the community allocations, can you kind of give me an idea of how we ended up with the numbers? Because they're not all the same, so it's not like 500, 500, 500. So I'm just curious if there was some methodology used on why these amounts?
Yes. Methodology used, as we looked at allocations that were made for these category of expenditures in some of our prior budgets. Basically, looking if we continue to practice, if you added all the amounts together for a series of budgets, it would come out to this, this level or close to this level. So it's averaging allocations for these type of categories in prior budgets.
Okay. And did that include all the allocations out of MCE when you were doing that? Or did it only include allocations that? Because don't we have some appropriation, or some organizations that do some MCE? Or is it all just us and the executive?
It included allocations that were provided to a organization, direct allocations to an organization.
Okay.
We'll, we'll note that there were some allocations included in miscellaneous current expense that would more appropriately be within a department's budget. Example there would be funds that had been identified to support law enforcement activities in Silicon for the ferry landing. Those resources we put directly in a department's budget, because it was more appropriate to have it be placed there than within miscellaneous current expense.
So is Blue Zones in miscellaneous current expenses, or is that somewhere else? Because he, the executive in his talks, talked that he was interested in funding that again, but I couldn't find it. And I think it was miscellaneous current expenses the last time, so I didn't know where to look. Or if he's not funding it, then I just-
Yeah. Yeah. The Blue Zone appropriation was for the current biennium, and there is not in the executive's proposal additional funds included for Blue Zone in the next-
Okay.
It was a one, it was intended to be a one-time startup investment?
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you. To follow up on that line of thinking, on your cultural heritage and preservation, could you give me an example of an allocation on that?
Yes, and I'll need to look at the sheet that that was in that category, so I, I can get that to you, Councilmember Morrell.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious to see where you came up with 3.4. I mean, based on your, your comment to Councilmember Hitchens, it was some kind of historical average, but I'm just curious to see where you came up with that figure.
Yeah, I, I can provide you that list, Councilmember Morrell.
Okay, that'd be fine.
I do have it in a folder here, but I think I would need to read through a few pages.
Where, Councilmember Dentson?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions. I was going to ask you about the fire districts, but you mentioned them, and I believe you said that was included in a section related to payment in lieu of taxes. Did I hear that correctly?
The appropriation you will see in miscellaneous current expense, in the section of the budget that has the amounts listed, and there is carrying forward allocations to fire districts. The source of the revenue for those allocations comes from payment in lieu of taxes. That is a payment that comes from the federal government and is made available to the county in order to cover costs that relate to services on federal property. This is primarily at Mount Rainier. And there is a listing within miscellaneous current expense to continue the allocations to the fire districts that have received those resources in the past.
Can additional fire districts apply? Is there going to be an RFP or anything for that, if they want to get extrication equipment or, or anything like that, radios?
The fire districts that receive the allocations are fire districts that are adjacent or nearby federal lands. So it's for services associated with responding to an incident or need on federal land.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. And then for the other four categories we've been talking about, do you know how this, this process is going to work? Is there going to be like an RFP that comes out at the beginning of the year, for example, for community events, and anybody who wants their event sponsored needs to, needs to apply?
Yes, there would be a request for proposals, and then the department that has programmatic responsibility associated with this category, in conjunction with the finance department, would administer the RFP process.
And the department will make the ultimate decision on who receives the funds?
Yes, it would be a decision made by, by a department.
Okay. Will there be any consultation with, with council, given our knowledge of the districts and kind of what some of the needs are, and reputations and things like that?
Certainly, there would be input that would be received by council and likely from others.
All right. Thank you.
Some of my colleagues asked some of my questions. This is a newer way of, suggested way of doing community allocations. I will note, there's more in the works for council to consider about appropriation authority, and it's up to council to decide, are these, if we, do we want to do community allocations at all? If we do, are these the right categories? These may not be the right categories. There might be different categories that are important to the council, or more specificity about the categories. So I appreciate the suggestion by the executive. We've, we heard, I think, I just want to repeat back what we heard in this regard. The executive and his team looked back at previous biennia of miscellaneous current expense and tried, am I capturing this accurately? Tried to group previous bi, last several biennia, and tried to group them in categories. And this is the language that you use that seemed to make the most sense as to how you group the previous investments.
That's correct, sure.
So again, it's up to the council, are these the right categories? Would we create different categories? Would we define them differently? Would we provide more prescriptive definition? That's up to the legislative branch to decide. Is that the right amount of money? All those are legislative branch decisions to, to make. Again, we have a proposal from the executive about how to, how to go about these community allocations. I'm not seeing any other hands at this time. Let's move on. Dr. Robinson.
Next slide. The next series of slides cover the American Rescue Plan allocations that are included in the executive's budget proposal. We have discussed, as we were looking at the tracking reports on American Rescue Plans, that we needed to engage with departments to ensure that we could identify what their expectation was for the expenditure of funds for the remainder of the current calendar year, and what the expectation was for the expenditure of the funds into the next biennium. We want to be very attentive that we're allocating resources to projects for which we can ensure that the funds are expended, because overall, we don't want to return any of the funding to, to the federal government. The other item that we had reviewed previously was that there is interest earnings that are accruing for the American Rescue Plan funds, which the finance department through our treasury unit has invested. our treasury unit has invested. We had mentioned before that for the CARES Act, a decision was made by the executive and the council to use the interest for CARES Act for CARES Act-related activities. In the executive's proposal, that same approach is taken. There is the ability to use interest earnings for other purposes, but we are bringing forward through the executive's proposal, primarily using those interest earnings for American Rescue Plan-type of activities. Listed in this chart and the subsequent ones are the recommended allocations, which many of these are being reappropriations. So funds that were appropriated during a current biennium that are not anticipated to be expended, and then being re-appropriated into the next biennium because the funds, even though some are under contract, are not anticipated to be expended fully during the current biennium. The listing is categorized according to the groupings that were used for the allocation of the American Rescue Plan when they were first received by the county. So on the first page here, we see that we have allocations for the category of strengthening and developing business opportunities with an equity focus. In going through the list, there are funds identified for the Business Accelerator Program so that the program can continue for the two years of the next biennium. Also, continuation of the Community Navigator Program, program and staffing needs to administer these initiatives at the Economic Development Party Department, funding to continue that support. And then a new recommendation, and that would be to use some of the funds that have not been expended in the current biennium for a small business safety and security grant program to be administered by the Economic Development Department. We have heard that there is strong interest of many in the business community, particularly the small business community, to have support for security for their business location. The executive had mentioned that in his most recent state of the county address. So there's identification of $3 million for this purpose. Economic Development Department and the executive's office have developed an ordinance that would prescribe how the funds could be used, and that ordinance, I believe, is being submitted to the council this week through the EDS system. So similar to the other allocations that have been made by the Economic Development Department, that will be, if you endorse this approach, an ordinance that would prescribe how the funds would be utilized and allocated. Next category is in workforce development, continuation of resources for young adult internship and employment opportunities, and then in infrastructure, funding for broadband partnerships. And this is a reappropriation of funds that would not, not anticipated to be expended during the current biennium. If you're aware, that the county, in conjunction with Niskewa Lee Tribe, had applied for state grant funds to have an expanded service area for broadband services in the southeast portion of the county, and the State Department of Commerce did not approve our grant. So this is looking at restructuring, or not restructuring necessarily, but maybe going back to the initial plan that the county had worked on for services within that area of the county. Next one is sewer and municipal partnerships. This is the allocation of funds to other local governments, and most all of those initiatives have been started. So this is the reappropriation of the funds into the next biennium. So in this category, total of $28.5 million. Moving to the next page, we have the categorization of homelessness prevention and response. And going down the list here, you'll see that these are allocations that were made in the current biennium, and funds are continued or re-appropriated for use within the next biennium. Rather than going through all of them, certainly can respond to questions, and departments can bring forward to you more detailed plans when they do their budget presentations. But you'll see here a number of initiatives that were endorsed current biennium, and this proposal would continue them into the next. Moving to the next slide, there are lists of other community response and resilience programs. Here, in a similar fashion, these are some reappropriations or reallocation of some funds that were unexpended and not anticipated to be spent in the current biennium, and beginning to utilize some of the interest earning revenue. One of the allocations that is not expended, anticipated to be expanded and will not be expanded this year, were some funds that were provided to the Health Department for COVID-19 health responses that the department has not spent and is not intending to spend and not anticipating an expenditure into the next year. Then moving to the next slide, which is the final slide on the American Rescue Plan allocations, these are the investment in Pierce County Service Delivery. This is where we had the expenditures for administering the ARPA program. We also had previously some resources for community restoration and cleanup, and this is expansion. And continuation of resources, as Ms. Demuth referenced, for COVID-19 court backlog, with that backlog still being worked down into the next biennium. And then a new recommendation would be utilization of some of the interest earnings to be made available to support renovation work within the county city building for the justice program. So if there are limitations on resources to complete the restoration work or improvement work within this building, this is identifying the interest earning as a source for that work. And then the final one is a continuation of resources for the hiring incentives at the Sheriff's Department, which, as you know, from reports from the Sheriff's Department are now giving us a return on filling vacancies we have within the department. So summary on American Rescue Plan, and we can, along with the departments that are administering these programs, go through the proposals with you in more detail.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. We'll start our questions on the American Rescue Plan proposal with Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I was writing a note, and I just want to make sure that I heard correctly, the $5 million for the Justice Center that's appropriated is the interest earnings from the COVID, or the ARPA dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot, go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
And I'll say, we have an estimate of interest earnings that are used for this proposal. What is variable for us is whether the higher interest rates continue throughout the course of the next biennium. So we are gaining interest now for county investments, five to five and a half percent, which is a good return for us in comparison to historical interest rates, at least in recent years. So the allocation for this purpose, we have an estimate. If interest earnings were not achieving that amount, this is an area where we feel we have the ability to have some flexibility in the total amount if interest earnings were not hitting what our projection is.
Is this a signal, Dr. Robinson, that we did not bond enough to do the facility improvements to the Justice Center that we're hoping to do?
The initial plans that were prepared by the Facilities Management Department, the plans were presuming that there would be adequate resources for renovations within the Justice Center. If there is planning and something that's not anticipated, it's a resource that we could go to. So I would not say that the planning was not accurate. It's saying that this is a resource that can be made available for additional work at this facility.
Councilmember Dentson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Robinson. On page 36 and 37, and perhaps some others, there are some individual organizations called out to receive funding. So is it because it's ARPA funding that we can call out individual organizations, and they don't have to go through the procurement process that we've been discussing?
I'll take, for example, a couple of organizations that are identified on slide 37. The council did indicate a direct allocation when some of these ARPA decisions were made. We then applied the competitive standard that was required after the emergency declarations were rescinded. So some of these were selected through a competitive process. So we went out with a competitive process, and the entities that were selected were those that the council had expressed an interest in allocating funds directly to. In the future, though, as I stated, on miscellaneous current expense, we'll not be able to do a direct allocation. We would need to go through a competitive process for resources that would be used by an individual entity.
Okay, so these, let me make sure I understand. These organizations went through a competitive process during the current biennium and were selected, and now we're going to move the money forward to the next biennium and retain? Or are we giving them more money? Are we just shifting the money because it wasn't used?
It's your latter statement. The, in many cases, the organizations were not able to expend the funds during the current biennium, so it's a reappropriation into the next biennium. It's not an increase in the amount that was contracted for in the current biennium. And as we close out the accounts for current biennium, the amount that is shown here potentially would be reduced if an entity did expend funds within the last few months of the current calendar year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
There's, in the package that came from Mr. Bokey, I think, last week, there's many attachments, many of the attachments we've been referencing during this overview session. One of the attachments is a more detailed American Rescue Plan Act worksheet. So I'll just draw members' attention to that. It has a little bit more information than presented here for members' reference, and you can see a little bit more clearly what was expended last, during the current biennium, and what's new, what's a reappropriation, what's a reallocation, so that I'd encourage members to look at that when you're reviewing the ARPA proposal. Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Chairman O. Just as a reminder, and then the total amount is a little bit in excess of $98 million that's remaining or that's in this budget. So that includes the $5 million in estimated interest revenue. The, and I'm looking at the finance department over here, but under the rules that I understand them to be, the money has to be obligated by the end of December of 2024, next year, and spent by the end of 2026. And so this really is one of the last opportunities the council's really going to get to really look into and discuss where it wants to go with the ARPA expenditures. You'll have other opportunities next year, but they may be few and far between, and everybody's got to keep their eyes on that 2026 deadline, that are these groups going to be able to, especially on these larger capital projects that you're now discussing, able to get those. But I don't think that those dates have changed, but I just want to make sure that they've received any new treasury guidance on any of those things. So just to remind the council of that.
Thank you. I may add, the interest earning estimate is higher than $5 million. That is the allocation of interest for the Justice Center project, but there are a few other items included in the list that also are drawing upon interest earnings.
Dr. Robinson, can you make sure that the appropriate departments, economic development, planning public works, human services, that they're prepared to speak to the ARPA? Or if it's not coming from them, or if they're not experts on it, if you can let us know if there's someone else we should be working with on the ARPA proposal?
Finance department will reach out to those departments for whom allocations remain so that they can review it for you and council members.
And I would, and I would note, Mr. Chairman, that they have been asked in the PowerPoint that the council has for every department to fill out, that there is an ARPA slide in there to discuss their ARPA expenditures. So you'll have an opportunity during the presentations to follow up with them on their proposed ARPA expenditures, and if there are any departments that are not, haven't been asked to be here, and there aren't many, so I think you'll get your arms around most of them, the first one being human services, which will be next Wednesday.
Thank you. Councilmember Dentson?
I think I'm good. I will ask. I have lots of questions, so I'll wait for the departments. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson, real quick, before we leave you on ARPA, the council called out the young adult, young adult paid internship programs as one of our many priorities. We see this under workforce development. I'm wondering if quickly you can let us know, is this meant to go to the higher Pierce County program? That we, the council understands to be the higher Pierce County program administered through Workforce Central? Or is it something else?
That service is what this allocation is presuming. We will need to make a determination if there is a competitive process that needs to be pursued for that allocation.
Can you, can you share your response one more time, please? I'm not sure I was following, I apologize.
Yes, yeah. The purpose of this allocation relates to services that you described.
Okay.
It is evaluation that needs to be completed, whether that can be done as a direct allocation or if it needs to be done through a RFP process.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Considering that we've worked pretty hard to kind of speed up the contracting service, this will add additional time. Do you have a prediction of how much time this new process for all of these different things will take? And I know it's not new, but it's new.
Some of the items, as I mentioned, are reappropriations, and contracts are already in effect. So it may be a change in date of completion that would need to be made. In the budget that is submitted to you, there are additional staff that are included in the finance department budget to deal with contracts associated with human services and an increase in contracts at Planning and Public Works, which we would want to draw up on for any of these new agreements or to reduce the time period associated with processing agreements that are in the base budget.
So the RFP process would not add much time? Or is there like a, has to be out for 30 days? Like, what does that look like?
The RFP process is variable based upon the nature of the engagement. If the engagement is one that has defined requirements, the RFP process does not need to be as long, so it is variable. Oftentimes, what is longer is for a project at Planning and Public Works because of the detail that would need to be gathered by the entities that have an interest in bidding on the project. But I hear your interest in.
I'm just, yeah, because we worked really hard, and then we've also got the additional deadline of the end of 2024, if there's ARPA dollars involved. And so if somebody gets into it, and we realize we can't find someone to do that service because of how we've put it out, we now need to come back, and government speed is a thing. So just wanted to make sure that if we're adding an additional chunk of time to the contracting process with the initial RFP and all of that work, that we've really thought about how we're going to streamline that. we've really thought about how we're going to streamline that. And I don't, you don't necessarily need to respond, I just want to, I just want to set out loud.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think those are all of our questions for now. I think every member can understand why we've created a blackout period for other legislation and why we're trying to really clear our plates to focus on this. We're just starting the work and barely touching the surface of, of the detail and the many decisions we need to make. So this is why we're trying to all conserve all of our energy to really focus solely on budget development for the next eight weeks. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We have a presentation yet to go on the Biennial Budget Community Engagement Survey, and then a couple of, just, the, the other two presentations are relatively short, but get, again, continuing to ground the council on the ordinance's resolutions and schedule to come. Mr. Robinson, thank you very much. Ms. DeMuth, I think you're taking it from here.
Thank you, Julie DeMuth, again, for, with the Finance Department. So I have a brief presentation for you today on the Biennial Budget Community Engagement Survey that was conducted earlier this year. Next slide, please. This is the, the first year that the county conducted a community survey specific to the development of the county's budget. The county contracted with a marketing and communications firm to create an online open house. So this is similar to what some of our other departments do for outreach and community engagement around their work. So the online open house provided an overview of the county, county services, the budget and the budget process, along with links to additional information such as open budget and open checkbook, which are applications available within Open Pierce County. From there, a user could choose to complete the survey to provide input and feedback to the county on our services and budget priorities. So the open house in the survey were available to the public beginning in mid-May, and it was open through late June of this year. The materials were translated into Korean, Spanish, and Vietnamese to help try and reach more specific demographics. Several mechanisms were used for outreach to the public. This included printer, printed flyers that were available at a variety of our community groups and providers, different email listservs, including councils listservs, as well as listservs for our boards and commissions, and several social media channels, including Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, and Nextdoor. So digital ads were used on these social media channels to try and increase outreach to certain demographics and geographic areas within the county. Next slide, please. So a total of two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven individuals responded to the survey. This slide provides a demographic, or sorry, a geographic overview of the respondents. So as you can see, we, we had a pretty good geographic diversity of, of survey respondents. The blue, bluish gray color in the center represents our incorporated areas of the county, and then the green represents unincorporated areas of Pierce County. Overall, more than three out of every four survey respondents were from unincorporated areas within the county. Next slide. So shifting to demographics of our survey respondents, eighty-three percent of our survey respondents were white. The next largest category was individuals identifying as two or more races at six-point-nine percent. Three-point-eight percent were Hispanic or Latino. Two percent black or African-American. One-point-seven percent Asian. One percent American Indian or Alaska Native. Point-two percent Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. And one-point-three percent selected other as their race or ethnicity category. On the next slide, we have age. So looking at age, sixty-five percent of our respondents were fifty-five and older. Seven percent were under the age of thirty-five, and thirty-two percent of our respondents were between the ages of thirty-five and fifty-four years of age. So in terms of age, survey respondents were, we were overrepresented by older members of our community, with twenty-nine percent of our respondents being between the ages of sixty-five and seventy-four, and twelve percent being older than seventy-five. The next slide provides gender. So sixty-three percent of our respondents identified as female, thirty-four percent as male, and two-point-eight percent identified as other. And then finally, household income. Forty-nine percent of survey respondents had a household income at or above the county's median income of eighty-three thousand two hundred dollars. Nearly thirty-three percent had a household income greater than a hundred thousand dollars, while fourteen percent had a household income at or below fifty thousand dollars. Twenty-four percent of respondents opted not to specify their income level. So among respondents, individuals identifying as white, female, and older than sixty-five years of age were overrepresented relative to their representation among our Pierce County residents. Data on survey respondents was reviewed with our Communications Firm Weekly, and strategies to try and reach more diverse demographics were deployed. So we, we really looked at trying to increase that diversity of demographics. To account for the overrepresentation, we did use random iterative method weighting to adjust the sample populations of respondents to more appropriately fit the demographic profile of our Pierce County population. So this weighting methodology is a common practice for this type of survey, so we did, you know, help weight the responses to account for the overrepresentation. Moving to key findings from the survey, those are summarized on this slide here. The top three budget priorities identified by survey respondents are public safety and crime, transportation and roads, and homelessness and housing. And we'll go through each of these in more detail in the following slides. So the, for the remainder of the slides that you'll see, the data was analyzed and provided in this presentation for both respondents countywide, as well as respondents from unincorporated areas. So as you will see on these slides, the responses were pretty closely aligned between our total county population, or total respondents, as well as respondents from our unincorporated areas. So in response to the question, what do you think are the biggest problems facing Pierce County in the next twelve months? Violence was ranked number one, closely followed by homelessness, high cost of living, and In response to the question, how do you feel about taxes and the funding of county services? Survey respondents indicate that about one out of every four residents favors reducing both taxes as well as county services. Another quarter of the survey respondents favored paying more taxes only if county service levels increased, and approximately twenty-two percent of respondents were in favor of keeping taxes at the same rate, even if it meant reducing our level of service. In the narrative responses to these questions, there was a higher demand for reduced taxes among older individuals who are living off of fixed incomes. Those responding to other in this question had an option where they could add a narrative Next slide, please.
Ms. DeMuth, before you go too much further, it's because there's a lot here, allow me to have you pause. We have a question from Vice Chair Campbell.
If we could back up about two slides, like, what are the, the key issues? There we go. So, I guess, no, go forward, one. When we were looking at these violence, homelessness, were those answers that came from them writing in the answer, or did we give them categories by which to select?
So the categories were provided, and those categories were violence, homelessness, high cost of living, drugs, traffic, jobs, and pollution. And then there was the option to select other and write in a, a separate response. So they had the ability to, to write in what they felt was the biggest problem as well.
So how did we come up with that list of topics as the ones? Because ultimately, we only got responses from that which we put into the survey as we wanted to measure.
These, among discussions that were held, these were issues that were identified as being at the forefront, not only in our county, but in our region as well. And the hope was is that if there were other areas identified as a high priority for residents, that that information would come in through the ability to write a narrative response. It's, it's difficult to quantify survey responses if, if it is an open-ended narrative response. So by identifying these categories, it helps us have, have a more quantitative ability to analyze the data.
I appreciate, and I want to sort of thank you for the work on this. It gives us something to look at. What I don't see in here, for example, homelessness is an issue. Do we have a breakdown? Maybe I need to wait a little bit further if there's a breakdown on that. Is that people see too many homeless encampments along the streets, and they think that homelessness and the homeless population is a source of crime? Or is it that we have too many people facing homelessness and therefore it is the biggest problem because? Do you understand the question that I'm asking?
Yes, yes, and it, and it's a great question. Some of that can be derived from the, the narrative responses that were provided by survey respondents. One, one of our, our goals with the survey was to keep it brief and high-level so that we could have a higher rate of completion. As what we were advised is, is surveys that become longer, there's, there's a much lower rate of completion with those surveys. So we did pay particular attention to trying to keep the survey at a higher level with a limited number of questions. So it, it doesn't dive into that in terms of the questions asked, that level of detail that, that you're describing, Councilmember Campbell, but some of that can be derived from the narrative responses that, that respondents gave. And it is a variety in terms of homelessness. It's, it's all of what you described. There were, there were comments, you know, both in terms of encampments, crimes, drugs, but then also chronic homelessness and, and the need to, to house our chronically homelessness and to help people get back on their feet. So it was a wide, a wide variety of responses that were received.
Okay, and just one last question, and if I may, Chair, and then, sorry to interrupt the presentation here. When this survey was being compiled, was there any outreach to any members of the county council or the county council staff as to what we would have liked to see measured?
I, no, I don't believe so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell.
I think you're good. One forward. All right, so the, the next question asked respondents, which funding solution would most closely represent their option on addressing our budget issues, particularly within the general fund? So the options that were provided is reduce funding in some departments, reduce funding in all departments, raise taxes and fees to cover shortfalls, and then maintain current service levels, causing a budget deficit. More than half of respondents favored reducing funding in some departments rather than in all departments. Roughly twenty percent selected reduce funding in all departments, and fifteen percent selected raising taxes to cover the revenue shortfalls. For this question, those selecting reduce funding in some departments were then asked in the survey to provide what services they, they would cut. And so that, that information was provided in narrative responses. So now we'll move into a series of slides that focuses in each of the priority areas that were identified. So public safety and crime was overwhelmingly the top priority of survey respondents, with seventy-three percent of respondents, all respondents, and seventy-seven percent of respondents from unincorporated areas, selecting public safety as their most important priority. Ninety-five percent of respondents and over ninety-seven percent of respondents from unincorporated areas stated that funding for public safety should not be reduced. When asked about transportation and roads, thirty-four percent of respondents identified this as most important, with fifty-six percent selecting it as somewhat important. Over ninety-three percent of respondents stated that funding for transportation and roads should not be reduced. Additionally, one out of every seven respondents mentioned traffic or congestion when asked about what they liked least about Pierce County. So that showed up in their, their narrative responses to that question. Homelessness and housing closely followed. Transportation and roads is a priority, with little, a little over eighty percent of respondents stating that funding for homelessness and housing services should not be reduced. In the narrative responses here, one out of every five respondents included the term homelessness and what they described as what they liked least about Pierce County. Jobs and the economy was the next ranked priority. Approximately ninety percent of respondents stated funding for jobs and the economy should not be reduced. About three out of every one hundred respondents said jobs were a problem for Pierce County in their narrative responses. The next priority is drugs and mental health treatment. And again, here, around ninety percent of respondents stated funding for drugs and mental health services should not be reduced. And nearly one out of every five respondents included drug use and/or mental health in what they liked least about Pierce County. When asked about fair and efficient courts, nearly ninety percent of respondents stated funding for these services should not be reduced. In the narrative responses, we did note that courts and mental health supports were often included in the broader public safety concerns that they had. Next is environment and sustainability. One in every four respondents indicated that funding for environmental and sustainability programs should be reduced. We did note that environmental elements were, were mentioned in a little more than two hundred of the open-ended survey responses. And then finally, parks, trails, and recreation. This was ranked last in our survey respondents' priorities. Two out of every five residents indicated parks, trails, and recreation were not important when allocating funding. I will say, our narrative responses show that people are very appreciative of the parks and the open space that we have. The general idea was that additional funding should not be put towards those areas, but towards other service areas here at the county. All right, so to, to summarize how the results of this community engagement survey are reflected in the budget, you'll see that the budget prioritizes public safety. Budgets for our sheriff's law enforcement and corrections show substantial increases in their funding. While funding was reduced in those departments, it was reallocated to other higher operational costs, both within law enforcement as well as corrections. Second, within the general fund, resources were allocated, reallocated from some department budgets to help support our public safety and legal judicial services here at the county. budgets to help support our public safety and legal judicial services here at the county. And then finally, the budget will show continued investments in the county's road and transportation systems. The budget that you have before you has $391 million budgeted for road preservation and capital projects for our roadways. And a continued support for homelessness and housing, with over $200 million in total allocated for various affordable housing projects and homelessness services. So that is a high-level summary of the results of our community engagement survey.
Thank you, Ms. DeMuth. Any questions for Ms. DeMuth? Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you very much and appreciate the explanation, the the way you interpreted the data, you explaining it helped a lot, so I appreciate that. I am curious about two possible ways of just kind of cutting data, and you can tell me yes, this is possible or no, it's not possible. One is, is there a way to cut the data for the parks question where it's just people that are in Pierce County parks and get rid of all of our parks districts that have specialty funding? So like Key Penn has a lot of additional funding. Obviously Tacoma has a lot of additional funding, like and so that we can really see is it Pierce County parks residents really don't want us to invest in parks?
Yeah, the the only the only ability we have is to look at it from unincorporated respondents in our unincorporated areas versus incorporated. We we don't have a way to to analyze the data and how you describe.
Okay, because I think some of our parks districts do some really, really good work, so it could be skewing the data if I was looking for county funding in parks. So just curious. My second question just is, I am really wanting to, I guess, see how the youth voice shows up in this. And I know we had a limited number of youth, but we're writing a budget that's planning for the future. In some cases, the way you've looked at it, 10 years, those are the future 20, 30-somethings that are going to be working for county government, buying homes, opening new jobs and things. And I just I'm curious if there's a way to kind of just see their responses.
We could do that, yes. As you saw, the low number of responses from our younger population, but we could, yes, we could pull out those responses separate of of all the other responses.
Okay. I would really appreciate just kind of looking at that because I just think it's an important lens to look at if we're doing long-term planning and because the 75-year-old absolutely has a right to say what they want, but the impacts on her life versus the 25-year-old, I want to make sure and it's not waiting one versus the other. I just want to make sure that I really understand. And when they're lumped together, it's hard. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Ms. DeMuth, really want to thank you and the team to put effort into doing a budget engagement survey. It's hard work to do anything like that. It really is. And, you know, reaching out to the public is really important to to get their feedback. And that this is the first time we've done this in recent time, at least like this, is very, very commendable. Thank you. I urge folks to, it's it's one bit of information. It's good information. It's one bit of information. It's not a statistically significant sample, as we've already come to understand, and we've said that from the start. It's not a statistically significant sample. We've done the best we could to get the feedback. And like it or not, you all are paid to figure out how you make investments on tough things, right? So reducing crime, for example, you you many believe and understand you reduce crime by reducing poverty and reducing people's instability and addiction to substances and helping treat their mental health disorders. The world is complicated. And so how one goes about resourcing public safety is is complicated and complex. And that's the world we live in. And so this, I encourage folks not to just use this for, it's not meant to be soundbites and it's not meant to trivialize the complex issues that we face. The executives never said that. Ms. DeMuth's never said that. I just, I wanted to just stress that how we get at solving violence and homelessness and all of the different issues that are top of mind for the people at Pierce County is complex and multifaceted, and it's our job to to deal with all that complexity. This is one good bit of information.
Councilmember Morell?
Thank you. Appreciate that interpretation there. But on the survey that was done, was it done? What was the timing of that pertaining to the to the budget? I mean, was that done six months ago, eight months ago, four months ago?
The survey in online open house was open from mid-May earlier this year through the end of July, or sorry, end of June.
May to June?
Yes.
Okay. And and when you said you could separate out unincorporated from the responses, I I would be interested in 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 that because, you know, there again, I think that you will find, as Council Chair Mello said, you know, people can interpret things different ways. And as I always say, my suburban and rural communities look at things differently than some of the urban areas within unincorporated. And, you know, what they reflect on is is through their lens and how they perceive things. So and I understand that, you know, we can look at public safety multiple ways. And obviously, if, you know, our ultimate goal is to remove crime entirely, which, you know, I don't know if we'll ever get to that point, but there again, what's the best way looking forward to to deal with that entity? And the same thing with homelessness, you know, how do we create a way to reduce that when we have an economy that the housing market is going through the roof? So but but there again, trying to just take the information, digest it, to look at it, but yet understand that maybe it's not a total picture. And I don't think we're, you're indicating, the executives are not indicating that, but I I think it is a good barometer for what's out there. So anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Well noted, Councilmember Morell. That in the in the presentation, it does show responses for all of Pierce County and then responses just for unincorporated. So that is depicted in the presentation. There is variation between those two groups, but surprisingly, it was more consistent than than I anticipated, I'll say.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. DeMuth. It's really important that we find multiple ways to engage the public, and thank you for doing this on the front end in the development of the proposal. That brings us to item six, the budget, excuse me, item five, overview and budget ordinances and resolutions. Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Chair Mello, Paul Bokey, council staff. Page 63 of the online packet is a list of all the ordinances that you're going to be asked to consider that are already up here. A number of those will go to rules, I'll note. So you've got the non-representative general cost of living adjustment for the non-representative employees. That will go to the Rules Committee. Note that there are three ad valorem, and that's, I think, was explained that it's a requirement of the state of Washington. It typically was one ad valorem. You're being asked to do three, which is the general tax levy, the conservation futures, and the road levy. And then there's also elected official general wage increase. That's been up here for a little while. That actually arrived several months ago. Here's the budget itself. And then there are a number of fee ordinances, planning and public works and accessory treasure fees. Those are mainly your planning fees, parks and rec fees, parks impact fees, the capital facilities plan, sewer charges, airport lease rates and rental fees. There's an airport loan, equipment rental and revolving fund fees, and that's a newer one. I think the last, two years ago was the first time you were asked to do that. That is another requirement from the state. Ferry fares, school impact fees, surface sewer improvement plan, also known as the SIP, Surface Water Improvement Plan, also known as the SWIP, Transportation Improvement Plan, the TIP, jail incarceration rates, which will go through the Public Safety Committee. We have also received an ordinance, but I didn't put it on here because we're having some issues with the structure of the ordinance. And I think it was mentioned about a water utility, the formation of the water utility, the structure of the ordinance just didn't kind of meet our guidelines here. That was staff's recommendation, so we're working that out with the the executive side. You would also typically have, and then are not listed on here because they're not in the hopper yet, what we call the trailer ordinances, or two trailer ordinances and one trailer resolution. And those are, we'll be putting those together fairly soon. And those will go with the budget. So those will go directly to the the Committee of the Whole on, actually, November 8th. So with that, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. So we want to remind members, the many, the many ordinances that come together to support the budget, including the budget bill itself. And again, the recommendation, as I stated earlier, is that these start in their committee of jurisdiction. And some of them, my recommendation is just for added public process and bringing the public along, some of them to get referred to a committee of the whole. The ones that are more straightforward, don't have as much public interest, or I don't know how to say it, can can get scheduled for for final consideration by council. But the the structure here is it begins in its committee of jurisdiction. Some of them will work its way to the to the committee of the whole if if it needs more council review and dialogue or of high public interest. So that that and then and then to full council. So that's the recommended structure, recommended path. Any questions about that? Okay, we are at item six, council, the budget schedule and expectations. Mr. Bokey, I'm taking this?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. So we are at page 64 of the packet. Our budget staff has prepared a budget calendar for us. So again, beginning on page 64 of the of the packet, of course, we see the the dates on the left-hand side. And then our staff is using this to manage all of our many conflicts on our time between now and Thanksgiving. So the council activity column indicates if there's another significant council activity like the, and there's a key at the very end. So acronyms here, but the key to the acronyms is at the very end of the of the packet. So, right, we we need to make sure the Board of Health can still meet, and the flood control zone district can still meet, and so on and so forth. Again, the key is at the end of the packet. So that second, that 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 third column in from the left is is doing just that, tracking the the various conflicts for our time of other council activity. And 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 the the next column over, the meeting conflicts, is meant to relate to that as well. And then you get to budget activity, and that's the budget activity for the entire council. And you can see what we have planned moving forward. So the next, here we are on September 28th with the with the budget overview, and then you get to Wednesday, October 4th, next to Wednesday, October 4th, in the morning. Human Services will be here to present on on their budget. And then you see, of course, the appropriate council staff person. So you you see how that is laid out for us throughout the duration of the budget calendar? And I now want to, so I'll just say, I'm not going to go through the rest of this, but that's how one of them is, and you can, hopefully now you can see how this is constructed. You see where we bring in departments, on what days. And so hopefully, this helps you prioritize your time about how you go about reading the budget book and in what order. This can hopefully focus your time about how you read the budget book, how you prepare your questions, and work with our staff to to prepare your questions or to prepare your thinking for that committee of the whole session. If there is a department that you don't see on here that we didn't plug in, please let me know. I've worked very closely with with our budget staff to plan out the schedule. If there is a, if there is high interest by a member, we will do everything we can to accommodate. We've, we've done the best we could with the time that we have set aside for this process. But if if there's something missing, please let me know, and we will do what we do, we'll do everything we can to accommodate the request. I want to draw your attention. We now get to Thursday, October 26th, towards the end of the process. Thursday, October 26th, begins our time as a council in what we're calling budget retreat. So right now, we're in committee of the whole. Come the end of October, we move to budget retreat time. This is time with, together with our council staff, to begin reflecting on what we heard during committee of the wholes, to begin thinking about what's, what do we like in the proposed budget? What's missing? What fits council's goals? What doesn't quite hit the mark? How do we want to, what do we want in our final budget? We're going to, the the intent is to have those day-long, they're almost all day-long retreats, to dive into detail in all the different aspects of the budget and use that time to construct our budget. One of them's a half-day, but the other four are designed to be all-day sessions. And then we get to, Mr. Bokey, I'm sorry. And then we get to Thursday, November 9th.
It's actually Wednesday, November 8th is the first day you'll start to look at the non-budget, all those other ordinances that I spoke to a few minutes ago. And the budget will be looked at. The plan is to consider the budget document on the meeting of Thursday, November 9th, which is at 1:30 p.m.
So we will be, I'll be listening hard during the budget retreat time for what council, how council wants to design our final budget. And so that Thursday, November 9th, is when I'm planning on the council releasing its 24, 25 budget. That is designed to give, of course, that's 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 listening to the, all the the council changes to the budget. So that is designed to give the weekend for the council and the public to to read and understand it, and then for us to then do a public hearing, a first public hearing on the budget on November 14th, and certainly take further amendments on Tuesday, November 14th, and then hold it over for another week, and do further possible amendments on Tuesday, November 21st, and adopt the budget before we leave for the Thanksgiving holiday. So the two major times for amendments by council will be Tuesday, November 14th and Tuesday, November 21st. And the the first major amendment is designed to be released for council, for council review and public review, Thursday, November 9th. So I want to be really clear about that. The first major amendment that hopefully is is inclusive of much of what we hear during our committee of the whole and budget retreat time is designed to come, is designed to be released on Thursday, November 9th. So I really encourage members to talk to me about changes they want to see in there. I will be listening to committee of the whole discussion and budget retreat dialogue. That should highly inform what is in that budget amendment that we release on Thursday, November 9th. 9th. There's a lot there, there's a lot of meetings ahead of us. I'm, for those who haven't done this before, happy to spend more time offline to make sure you feel as comfortable as possible about the process and the many steps for you to make sure you have your voice heard and your impact made on this two-year budget. Are there questions about the budget schedule and the, the process and timeline, next steps that I've tried to lay out here? I'm just going to make one more comment, I'm sorry, about, and I'm going to get to you, Councilmember Hitchens, I'm going to make one more comment about that. That Thursday, November 9th council budget that I intend to release on behalf of the budget, that's meant to be the major substitute amendment. The reason why it's incumbent upon all of us to work together and build that together and be really talking to each other during the budget retreat time about what, what we want to see in our final budget, that, the, one major reason to release a major, a substitute, I don't know how much of, of the proposed budget we're going to change, I don't mean to make so much of a presumption, but I guarantee you, we're going to change something. The, the reason to have a substitute is because at the end of the day, it has to balance. It's really hard if we're running 200 amendments and Mr. Bokey's trying to balance the bill if one member's making a bunch of amendments and another member does something that undoes that, and so on and so forth. We, at the end of the day, this has to balance. And so if we can make as many of our changes that most of us agree to in one substitute, it, it just, it helps manage the madness a bit with the time that we have to develop a budget together and adopt a budget together. The more amendments we have, and if they're in conflict about where the revenue's coming from, it makes it really hard to track the detail, not only for the public to follow along, but for Mr. Bokey to ensure that what we're deciding on is balanced. So that's one of the major reasons why we're designing this time together to listen to each other and design a major substitute amendment, my words, a major substitute amendment that we will release on Thursday, November 9th. Members will have certainly a lot of opportunity to make amendment to that substitute. And I'm, I'm trying to be really clear that members, that the two opportunities we have carved out right now is Thursday, is Tuesday, November 14th and Tuesday, November 21 to make amendment to the substitute that the council and, the council intends to release on November 9th. Okay, hopefully that makes sense. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the schedule, I think that's really helpful. Going back to the questions about departments, if there's a question that we have about a department that's not coming up, should we just send it to staff and then they'll field it to department? Because there's no reason to schedule them to come up if I'm the only one that has a question.
Thank you for that. Yes, and let me correct what I said earlier. If you, I want to, I want to try to be clear, and Ms. Murray can correct me about how we're organizing ourselves. You can begin asking your budget questions at any time, of course. And if it's a, it's a, if it's a department-specific question and you know who to talk to on our staff, please ask that policy staff person directly. Mr. Bokey and Ms. Chapman are here to run interference for general questions, help field them if we're unsure about who to go to. But if you know it's a human services question, go directly to Lee Beth Merrick. And there's no need to wait till Director Moss comes out, up here next week. If you already have questions to start, start getting your questions to the lead policy staff person.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And then I saw it on the calendar, and I'm just going to keep reminding us that WASAC, I think four of us are going, so just making sure somebody's here to manage the meeting. Somebody's left, so somebody's here in person to run the meeting and, and do that work. So just wanted to make sure. I'm going to keep drumming. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the proposed schedule and timeline and next steps? Councilmember Morell.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate the schedule. I just want to understand, you know, moving forward in this budget, this is going to be for a two-year budget. And I know that, you know, there's a difference between capital one-time investment versus, you know, operational costs on programs that we can't obligate future councils to on, on budgets. So I just want to make sure that everyone's clear, if they haven't developed a budget to stand up a call, program, you, you got two years of funding and no guarantee after that. I mean, that's my perception. So I just want to clarify that, that that's kind of how this biennial budget will move forward with.
We will certainly make appropriations for two years and have no authority to make any appropriation after those two years.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments about the path ahead? Okay, Mr. Bokey, any closing comments?
Just a reminder to the council that your next committee at the whole for budget purposes is next Wednesday, October 4th, here in these chambers at, at 9:30 AM. It will be the Human Services Budget Presentation. We should be receiving that presentation sometime in the next 24 hours, and we will forward that presentation out to you.
Thank you. And I've made reference a couple of times to the package of information we've requested of the executive and his budget transmittal. We have successfully received all of that, that came from Ms., that came to us through Mr. Bokey via email. If you haven't seen that yet, I do encourage you to pull that up, and we will make time to, to have a session about that, to make sure everybody understands what's in those documents. There's a lot of really important information in those documents. Well, Mr. Robinson and Ms. DeMuth, we want to thank you. We have a long road ahead, but this is a good start. Thank you for making yourself available. You've done a great deal of work to get the county to this point, and we really appreciate everything you do on behalf of Pierce County. We are at item seven. I know the hour is late, but is there any other council member discussions at this Seeing other business before the Pierce County Council and Committee of the Whole, we are adjourned.